Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 11, 2022. Call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mr. Councilman, any additions or corrections for it? I second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. The implication is from River Hope Church. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Hans Peters. Good to be back with you, and I apologize in advance for ducking out of another meeting. You have some exciting things on the agenda, and so thanks for keeping the city up and running. At our ecumenical, our Hutchinson Ecumenical Ministerial Association, Pastor Steve Larson was passed Thursday brought up Psalm 46, and that's been on my mind for the last several days. There's a familiar line in there, "Be still and know that I am God," and Pastor Steve brought up some of the different translations that we might find.[93.14][93.14]"Cease your striving," or even "Stop fighting." And as I think about some of the things going on around the world, whether it's Ukraine or other parts of the world, even as I think about Election Day coming up, and a good reminder to cease our striving, to put our trust beyond ourselves, and there's a line that I like, that we say every week at worship at River Hope, and confess that God is God and we are not. And so this Psalm sends for us simply is, and if you just want to sing, I won't give you a solo tonight, Mary, but if you want to dance, like you thought you might have to.
Just remember on TV.
(Music)
Thank you.
Thank you. Beautiful.
Next, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have any? All right, underneath there we have a resolution number 15497, accepting cash donations for Fireman's Park project.
Motion to approve, resolution 1415497.
I will second that, and I also want to say that while I'm driving through the bank drive-through, I go over, and there's kids and dogs and parents, they're all over at that Fireman's Park enjoying it, so what a wonderful little gift to our city for everybody. So thanks to everyone that's worked.
Well, you know, Mary, we have to kind of check with Chad with his sons to see that they, did Benny give it the...
Yep, so we were there the week after it opened, and there were 50 people there, and I said, "That was more people than have been at Fireman's Park in the last six years."[343.12][343.12](Laughter) They don't always love it. It turned out perfect, so it's kudos to everybody that helped with the project. It turned out perfect.
That's great.
Mary, motion by Pat, second by Mary to approve the resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next, the public comment. Citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address, and try to keep your comments under five minutes, please.
I got a little hand up. Can I give those?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Forseer and council members. My name is Tony Rancor, and I live at 1042 Eighth Avenue Southwest. I've lived in Hutchinson for 29 years. I've come here today to talk about a waterline problem I had last winter. The waterline in my house had break between the water shut-off and the street, meaning it was the city's responsibility to repair it. I was told the city would cover $4,000 of the cost to repair the break according to code 52.02. Please see the attached highlighted code. Because the shut-off is in my driveway, the contractor hired by the city had to break up part of my driveway to access it. The problem occurred in the winter, so we had to wait till spring to have the contractors come back and repair our concrete driveway. The total bill was $5,320, which I am submitting to you all to look at. With the city covering $4,000 of this bill, that leaves a balance of $1,320 that I am responsible for. It's been almost 13 years since this city code has been enacted, and I'm asking the council to consider updating the code. Inflation has risen drastically since this code was introduced, especially within the last two years. The inflation rate between January of 2010, when the code was introduced, and October of 2022 is approximately 37%. Please see the date on the next page from the U.S. Department Bureau of Labor Statistics. If this code was updated to reflect inflation rates over the past 13 years, the $4,000 the city would cover would be raised 37%, making it $5,467. And I thank you for your time and consideration in updating this code, and I look forward to hearing from you all. And I don't know if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mary, we have a couple of minutes. We have the regular meeting minute, September 27, 2022.
Any motion to approve them? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat. To approve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is board appointments and reappointments. We have a reappointment of Andy Nissen and Stephen to the Airport Commission to September of 2025. Reappointment of Deb Cart and Mark Allen to Bicycle Pedestrian Committee to August of 2025. Reappointment of Tracy Markord to Bicycle Pedestrian Committee to August of 2024. Reappointment of Patrick Holder to the Public Arts Commission to August of 2025. Reappointment of Mark Classic to the Christ Board to August of 2025. B is approval of resolution number 15496, resolution appointing the election judges for the general election. C is approval of resolution number 15498, resolution setting interest rates for the 2021 adaptive assessment rolls. D is approval of change order number seven, letting number one, project number 22-01, the 2022 game management program. E is approval of the Spooky Sprint Event on October 29, 2022, and that is claims appropriation and contract fee. And if you have anything you want to pull up.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
My butt.
That's okay, you can have it.
That's Mary.
Did you guys decide?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mary, second by Pat to approve consent agenda. I'm glad you guys sit apart. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Mary, we do have a public hearing at six. Move on, update on Curbside Organic Collection Program Educational Outreach Campaign Project. Mr. Coase, second.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Excuse me. As you may have noticed via... How about that? Good evening, once again, Mayor Council. As you may have noticed via social media posts and utility bill inserts, the educational campaign outreach project funded by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency that the city has undertaken is underway. This city staff, Creekside Department, has hired Amplify for Change, a consulting group that focuses on behavioral changes. So they are here tonight to give a short presentation on the current efforts and the efforts moving forward on the project. So with that, I will introduce Mimi Shaw and Betsy Lipson of Amplify for Change to give their presentation.
Welcome, everyone, and thank you for having us and for giving us some time. I'm aware of the time. Let's see it here, but maybe if somebody could just move us along, because I know you have a couple of meetings coming up.
We're good to go.
Yeah. I'm also involved in my local government, so I know.
You're welcome.
The agenda. My name is Betsy Lipson, and my colleague, Mimi Shaw, and I are going to take about, I don't know, eight minutes just to walk you through what we are up to in Hutchinson. We've already gotten started. So as Andy said, we're focused on assisting the city in understanding better what's going on with your compost program in terms of participation rates, and then looking to see if we can help Andy with his goals of, and I'll get into that, what specific goals there are. The goals are listed on the left. So these are Andy's goals. They are the idea of increasing the number of households that set out the organics cart, and that's the green lid cart that all households have, and then secondly, reducing contamination. So for those of you who have toured Creekside, and I really encourage you to do that, we took about an hour today to do that, then you know the number two goal right there, which really should be the top. Contamination's a big issue at Creekside. What that means is, you know, you all have the green lid cart. Sometimes people, and I'm guilty of this as well, you know, we're in this urgent need to throw something away, and the cart has space, so you put something in the cart that really doesn't belong there. And we're going to see if we can do more in this campaign to help people understand what does and doesn't belong in the cart. That's the first step down at the bottom, is hearing from residents and understanding what people know about the organics program, what questions they have about it. And then step two, developing partners within the community who want to lean into this and help out and help Andy with outreach and education. We actually spoke earlier before this program with Hans, and he thinks that he wants to learn more, for example. I think a number of church communities might be interested in this. Working with residents, we're going to develop messages that resonate within the community, and then strategy that would work for outreach and education. Our firm, along with Andy, will develop outreach materials that the community will then use, and over the next year, you'll start to see some new outreach materials related to this. Really, the kickoff for it will probably be next spring when we'll start to send things. As you probably saw, there was a big push to have people participate in a survey, and you know, I think it was close to 4.5 Hutchinson residents in total filled out the survey, which that might sound like a low number, but in fact, for people who issue surveys like us, it's a really high number. So you can pat yourself on the back that you had folks who do want to participate in this, which based on survey results, I'll share some of them in a second. People, a lot of people really like this program. They use it, they like it. Yes, they have questions about it, and I'll share some of that. The other things we're doing to learn from the community are resident interviews. We've done that, four of those already, and then we're doing focus groups, and that's why we're in town today, to do some focus groups in person and to meet more people. Over the last few months, we have reviewed a lot of materials from Creekside, past materials that were used for education, a lot of data. I don't know if you know this, but the haulers do take pictures when they can, when they spot contamination, and they associate the picture with the address, so that gives us a chance to just sort of collect over time where there is the wrong stuff going into a cart. And that's just helpful going forward to figure out what type of stuff is going in the cart. So the survey, if you completed it, there were, you probably saw, there were, you know, eight questions. These are two of the questions. So one on the left is, I believe, composting food scraps in our community. And as you, just to explain back up for a second, the green lid cart, as you probably know, it collects yard trimmings, you know, leaves, it collects small branches from your yard, and then also food scraps, which is really this wonderful thing that your community offers. I have to say, it's unique to have this service, and the fact that you can collect food scraps from your kitchen and put them into your yard waste cart is a pretty incredible service. And a lot of people responded to the survey, agreed, they think it helps the community. The other one, collecting food scraps, is easy for me, and again, 61%, that just shows for the people who responded to the survey, they're already in the group, they already get it, they have maybe a pail in their countertop, they know what to do. So what we're going to do over the course of the next few months is make sure there's real clarity on what should not go into that pail, but then also for people who don't yet participate by putting the right stuff into the cart, just real clarity on what should or should not go into that cart. And I should just say, what ends up happening when you do put the wrong stuff in the cart is you're making work for your city employees who have to get it out at the other end, and that's the value of going to the Creekside facility, is you see that. When you accidentally put the plastic bag in that compost lid, somebody has to take the time to pull it up. So it's kind of making work. It also is losing out on an opportunity to create more compost for parks and so forth in the city. So in addition to having a really high participation rate in the survey, there were a number of people who gave us comments, which we love. The comments in green are examples of the positive things that we heard, so "Source Separated Materials Collection" has allowed my family to reduce the garbage we generate. That's something we hear all the time. You know, often households will reduce by upwards of 60% what they're putting in their garbage can when they start to compost. The other positive comment in green is, "This is a very valuable service of Hutchinson." People realize that. Then in orange, these are examples of some of the helpful critique or comments that we got that we could turn into the education and outreach. So I'm sometimes a little confused on what can be put in the green bin. Great to hear that, that's exactly why we're here. The other one is, "It might be nice to get a flyer teaching about the program and how to effectively use it." So that's perfect, that's on track with what we want for the next stage of the campaign. I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, B, for her presentation.
Thank you, Betsy. So the benefit of running a survey is you get quantitative data, so that allows you to do some statistics, data analysis, and looking at a number, a large number typically of where people fall in in terms of thinking about a particular issue. With the survey, as we all know, there's not a lot of joy in taking surveys, so we kind of went in and out with those eight or nine questions, and only had a couple of comment boxes for people to respond to particular questions that were open-ended. So you usually can post the survey with interview questions, because now you've got the data to feed into what you want to ask in your interviews, and you can fine-tune it a little bit and get people's opinions and suggestions, so this is a qualitative side of it. We had the opportunity to interview four people, however, Betsy and I feel like the gift of gab, so I see us interviewing a handful more, because we did get a lot of great insights from the form of the interview. Overall, just following on the tail of the survey, people were very positive about the program itself, but also acknowledged the challenges with getting people to participate in a way that is going to be effective to reducing that contamination and also increasing that park set-out rate. So here are some of the comments that we pulled from our interviews that we wanted to share with you. One of the challenges people thought is that there's a percentage of turnover in the community that generally happens in any community, and it's hard to maintain the momentum of a program when you've got people coming in and out. So how do you continually educate, let people know about something, and then remind them that's the case? So that's something we're going to take a look at in terms of how can we bring people in as they're moving into the community, raising awareness about it, and letting them know that they've got this great benefit in the city where a lot of other communities don't happen. And other individuals said, "Well, I think that people just stop looking at the decals of the lids." And as Betsy mentioned, that's definitely a challenge when you start to see that picture on the wall that you don't really enjoy, but you keep walking by it every day, and you don't do anything about it, and same thing. You see the sticker, you don't really register, like, oh, you know, does this go here, does this go there? You just kind of put it away and move on. Someone mentioned that the real opportunities, and we completely agree with this, would be with the schools and working with students, and I think students have a lot of influence, they're great influencers, they connect with their parents to share with them information. So we're going to be meeting with the high school and middle school, a couple of teachers there, and some students to learn a little bit about what they think and get their opinion on how we could effectively roll out a campaign that's going to be engaging for the community. And then similarly, we got a couple of examples of the benefit of when you participate in the composting, you can, you know, experience that, your own cost savings when you have to reduce trashment. So there's a value in participating just from that same point as well. So there's a lot of words on this slide. I'm not going to read all of them, but I will give you the gist of them. What we did in our interviews is we presented four different messages that we could share with the community to help roll out this campaign, and we took a couple of different elements that we really wanted to hone in on. So for example, the first one is, this was the money, the budget, the tax, potential taxes that relates to compost, and so the city saves money when it composts food scraps instead of taking it to the landfill. We heard from our interview, we said they felt like this would really resonate with folks, you know, just about the idea of lowering the tax burden, there's a cost saving, so this was one that many of our interviews felt pretty strongly about. The second one was, "The city-owned Creekside soils facility operates a business selling compost. Residents help the business when they use the green lid cart right away." So that notion of buy local, helping the local businesses feeds back into the city and helps our community, was also well-received. The third one, "The city uses compost made at Creekside to improve the soil in parks and beautification projects." Betsy and I have been here for less than 24 hours, and we have seen the beauty of Hutchinson, and that's, we haven't even talked about the leaves yet, but just the nature of the river, the parks, it's just, we went on two walks already. And to make those connections for folks, like, the compost that's being used, that's being collected at Creekside, created and generated, also helps right within the city, so the opportunity there. And then lastly, "Households can help produce the meat from more landfills when they put their food scraps in the curbside collection service." This one wasn't looked at as favorably as the other three, so we'll probably stick with different iterations of the top three, but we'll continue to do our research to see if there's any other variation on that fourth one that might shift the language there. So in terms of what's next, as we mentioned, we're conducting focus groups today, we have one after this meeting today, and then we have a few more conversations over the next couple of days, and then we'll produce a findings report, which essentially will roll up all of our learnings that we've gotten over the past several weeks with the survey, the interviews of focus groups, we'll share that with Andy and the team, so that he gets a better sense of what's the landscape like in Hutchinson and where do we go from here. And then we'll develop an outreach education strategy and plan, and this is basically the path for how we can move forward. And certainly, this is not a three-person team, Betsy and I really see as engaging community members, getting partners involved in the program to support Andy and his team in rolling out something that's going to really make that one-on-one connection with folks and instill a little energy into the current program. And then we will also develop an evaluation monitoring plan, because I'm sure as many of you know, you can create the best X, Y, and Z, but if you have no way of measuring the success or the challenges with that, then you don't know how to improve it. So we will develop a plan that will outline where are some of the checkpoints where we can check in and say, okay, is this where we want to be? Andy, does this, how do you feel about this as it relates to your goals? And then we can shift as needed. And then lastly, as part of our Greater Grant Project, we are developing a campaign guide for other Minnesota municipalities, so this is an opportunity to kind of put Hutchinson on the map, which they already are, more frankly, with the composting program that we've got in Creekside, but however, how you can create a campaign and get the momentum. And we'll be the first to say, this is the type of program that doesn't change, like, you know, six months from now, we're not expecting a huge turnaround in the next few months, or expecting to see a real change in numbers, but it's the momentum that we hope to build, and certainly when Andy continues to do a check-in every year or so to see where things are going, we're hoping to see the types of numbers that he's looking for of those goals. So all that said, thank you so much for your time, and if anyone has any questions, we are happy to intervene.
Andy, has contamination, have we, have the community gotten better with it? Not really.
No, we're pretty consistent. After the complete process and the rejects, they go to the landfill, about 15% of the incoming tonnage ends up going to the landfill. So I don't know if it was the first or second slide, in 2021, we received about 1,500 tons inbound, 224 tons of that went to the landfill, has contamination, that was screened out with the material after it was composted.
So Andy, what's the biggest, what's being dumped there that's giving us that much?
This is primarily, this is coming off the curbside program, the organics cart. So you name it, we've seen it. And I don't say it that jokingly, but you know, anything from clothing to just plastic films, plastic bottles, recycle, anything.
Batteries, car batteries.
At one point or another, several years ago, we actually seen a push lawnmower set in a green cart, you know, and the handle broken down, so it fit in the cart, you know, so it's, nothing surprises us anymore. And that's why we applied for this grant project, that's why we hired Amplify for Change, is to get into the why, why are people misusing the carts, I guess for lack of better words, and what can we do to help correct the problem? Is it more education, is it more constant education? I mean, all of these things goes without a doubt that the program needs, as it's kind of fallen on deaf ears over the recent years, but that's what we're here to find out, figure out the right side of the ship for lack of better words.
So you're telling us that there was one cart out that had a picture of a lawnmower?
No, we actually received it after the facility, this is probably 10 years or so ago, probably the hammers were taken, or before the pictures were taken, but...
Yeah, I think this is a great study. I think part of it is people's laziness, and I can consider myself guilty there, you know, you don't look at the, as you mentioned, Betsy, you don't look at the sheet.
Geez, it takes an effort. I'm going to have anti-cock. I gotta yell that out. How you gonna put that in there? That's where that goes.
It takes effort.
It does, yeah.
Well, the carts get really dirty over the years, and I have cleaned the top of my cart off so I can read everything nice, and they clean up very nice, so people should do that. All you have to do is look and read and put it in the right bin. And your guys...
It should be that simple.
Your guys who do the curbside pickup, I mean, they have a camera, they can see what's going in there, right?
Yeah, in some cases, we do get reports back from the hauler, from essential sanitation. If they can catch the contamination before it's dumped, which would mean the lid would have to be open, they'll take a picture of it from their truck, and then we'll get that picture sent back to us with the address. They won't dump the cart, we'll follow up with the resident saying why your cart wasn't dumped. We'll follow up with the residents saying why your cart wasn't dumped, record the address, and we have a three-strikes-and-you're-out kind of type of program. So if your address is flagged three times, we'll then pull the cart. If you're found to have contamination three different times, then we'll pull the cart. And in order to get the cart back, you have to come out and take it to our Creekside to understand why the materials you had in the cart created issues on our end. So it's been, it's been some time before we've had the three P defenders, but they have, they have happened.
I do. And I think the important aspect is, I think, we sometimes lose the value of Creekside, and we just think it's another business in town. And I don't think people realize that Creekside contributes $120,000 every year into our general fund. That's $120,000 that's paying for something, or it's reducing a tax burden. And so our ability to potentially increase that revenue, I think is an important aspect of what we're doing, this work and what worked out. Betsy and me are doing for us that opportunity to see how it was interviewed, and so it was really good.
I honestly don't think people really realize what Creekside really does. You know, it's just like, hey, they make soil, that's it.
Place the earth in the grass and leaves and brush.
Right. They pick it up and put it on a big pile, and that's what they do.
Yeah, and that's a good portion of the intent behind this project, is not only to educate on the Creekside program, but put Creekside on the map. I mean, we're already there, of course, to give the general public a better awareness of who we are, what we do, and what we do in terms of being good stewards of the land and protecting the environment.
Right.
Any other questions for Andy? Great presentation.
Thank you.
We have a public hearing, ordinance number 22-831, ordinance amending chapter 54 Stormwater Management of Hutchinson City Code, adding language to section 54.03. This is the second reading and adoption.
Good evening, Mayor Forseer, council members. On our agenda tonight is the second reading of the ordinance to include chlorine language to our stormwater code, specifically regarding minimizing impacts from chlorine run-up in our local waterways. What I'll share with you tonight is a brief presentation too, on the importance of this work and why we're doing what we're doing. Minnesota's kind of on the leading edge of this. The fact that we're in the upper Midwest, we use a lot of salt. We're starting to see those long-term impacts of chlorides within our waterways and our lakes. So no further ado, chlorides, we need to, we all do. We use chlorides in all forms of life, from the food we eat to the de-icing that we do on our roadways, using salt and water softeners. For example, discharges of wastewater plants from our water softeners can go through our wastewater pipe. It doesn't really do a whole lot once salt is in solution, it's very difficult to remove. But it is certainly an important integral part of our day-to-day lives. We also use it as dust suppressants, we use it in, salt is contained within fertilizers, different types of chemicals, it's also found in sewers as well. So salt is pretty prevalent everywhere within our environment. Too much salt is a bad thing, just like anything else. We see, we start to see it accumulate, and those concentrations rise over time within our lakes and rivers. What is the concern? Chlorides are very difficult to treat. Once they accumulate in water bodies and rivers, they tend to continuously increase. There's not really an effective way to treat for chlorides and remove those, but we still see continued increased use of chlorides for de-icing. It's not an uncommon thing to drive down a state highway four hours after an agent snowfall and those roads are bare pavement. That comes at a cost, certainly. We realize that, we're learning a lot more, there's tons of research occurring on alternatives to salt use, but like I said, from a cheap, readily available, very effective type of product, it is, there's a reason why it's so widely used, and that's why we're seeing more and more common effects of it. Other things to note too, stormwater treatment practices such as ponds, rain gardens, those types of things, don't necessarily remove those chlorides. So when we put salt down on the street, that salt, if over applied, if it doesn't necessarily break down into solution extra, then we see basically wasted salt. We see it on parking lots, we see it on roadways, we see it on sidewalks, where you're walking along and it hasn't snowed for four days and there's a pile of salt sitting there. That salt can be picked up and reused, otherwise, over time, it's going to rain, it's going to snow, and that salt's going to break down, and it's not really doing anything. If you put too much down, it's essentially just going to go straight to our water bodies. It can also impact our groundwater wells, and that gets into significant issues associated with people's ability to be able to consume that water. So when we don't want to drink the salt water, typically, you don't see it at high concentrations and really cause issues like you would be if you're drinking it out of the ocean or something like that, but still, it is cause for concern. We are starting to see also more in air waters, where they actually limit the uses of a lake because of the chlorides are so high. They're actually seeing impacts where their fish are dying off, or invertebrates are in survive, they're seeing declining fisheries because of the chloride concentrations within lakes. Salt is a big deal as well, because it doesn't take much to contaminate a lot of water. A teaspoon and that excess salt is enough to pool five gallons of water. So if you make a five-gallon bucket of clean water, you dump a teaspoon in there, and that is contaminated with chlorides to a point where you're not supposed to drink it forever. So like I said, it's not just a concern, it's not something that's an acute issue, it's something that's chronic, something that's going to be long-term and persistent. Hence, the reason we're really taking big strides in Minnesota and other areas in upper Midwest and elsewhere, to try to minimize and use only the amount we need to be conservationists, to make sure that we're doing, applying it properly, trying to minimize it. And then what can we do? Homeowners, business owners, local government units like the city, there are many ways we can reduce that salt in the environment. First, use mechanical means. If you can shovel it, plow it, blow it off. If you can eliminate it and get it down to enough pavement so that ice doesn't accumulate, you don't even need to add this salt. Cover salt piles or store that salt indoors. As long as you're limiting the amount of salt that's exposed to rainwater, meltwater, only put it down, it's not going to get exposed eventually, but we sure don't want to exacerbate that problem by storing it outside, and it's ultimately limiting the amount of effective use that salt has. Once you get it wet, it starts to clump up and it starts to make all kinds of headaches as far as application. So if it's colder than 15 degrees, it's not effective. There are other de-icer products that are more effective at a lower temperature. Like I said, a ton of research going on in the upper Midwest around that as well. Slow down and drive for the conditions. That's all of us. Me too. That's one of the big ones, is bare pavement and expectation. Certainly, for some it is, for others, it's not as big of a deal. If you live and work in town, bare pavement, we know what that looks like. Sometimes, sometimes we don't. If the conditions are right, and we get enough snow, and people are driving on it, we can't clear it off fast enough, those roads can get pretty messy, pretty ruddy, pretty nasty pretty fast, but sometimes it just takes time to let sun do its work. So doing that properly, trying to use these products in an effective way, where it's actually doing the most amount of good for what we're intended to use it for. Or salt doesn't always mean better melting. Use less than four pounds of salt over 1,000 square feet. Average parking space, about 150 square feet, and a pound of salt is equivalent to filling about a heaping 12-ounce cup. So like I said, the average parking space, you leave probably about half of a coffee mug to salt the parking space. It does not take a lot. Salt spread out, the granules spread out three to four inches apart, you don't need it for traction, that's not what salt is for. Salt is intended to melt, de-ice. If you have a real thin amount of ice, and it's really, really cold, use sand instead. Start focusing on traction rather than melting, because fortunately, we have alternate, alternate de-ices available that work at lower temperatures, but we're in Minnesota, it gets below zero for extended weeks at a time. In those types of instances, you can put all the salt down you want, it's not going to do any good. So use a non-chemical-based alternative if available. And like I said, if you see piles of it or excess, after it stops snowing, all the ice has melted, there's excess laying on your sidewalk there, sweep it up, put it back in the bucket, use it for the next time. And then use a water softener that recharges on demand rather than on a cycle. That way, it only recharges, and you're only using as much salt as you actually move it your home, rather than basing it on time. With that, will I answer any questions regarding salt? Otherwise, like I said, we're looking at a second reading of the ordinance for the chlorides in our stormwater code tonight. Do you have any answer you have?
John, I'm going to look at the other John.
There's another salt guy in here too.
Hey, John, do they, they use liquid? Is there a brine that they use on some of the trucks now?
Yeah, salt brine that we use does a couple of things. First of all, it carries about 23% of the solution that you're putting down is salt. So we're actually adding salt when we use the salt brine. The other thing that it does is it actually kickstarts the dry salt that's down already. So whether it's spread ahead of the truck or with the brine at the same time, or in the cases, even salt that's there, just latent in the, in the street, that brine can kickstart that, and you don't have to add as much that way. There's more and more research being done in liquids. Even at our, the HASS facility, for example, we have some, there's basically three things that can melt ice, and salt is the most common because it's the least expensive. High sugar content materials. A byproduct available locally is from the sugar beet plant in Renville. They can extract some of the waste and create a material that helps to melt the salt, or melt the ice. And then the other thing would be alcohol. Well, Candace might get mad if we said alcohol boos on the roads, so we don't want, so those are really your three options. And what you're really doing is you're actually lowering the freezing point of the water by adding those different chemicals. That's why when you make homemade ice cream, you put salt in the water, in the ice around the, because it's now colder than 32. So that's, that's the whole idea behind it. Yeah, we look at all kinds of different options, and we even have those there too. How can we reduce the amount of salt that we're putting down?
And there's tons of training, information out there. If it's smart salt in training, there's multiple city staff that are certified with that type of thing. Local businesses as well, there's some in Hutchinson that have that training as well. So we're building around chlorides to educate, reach out to the community, educate local contractors, educate businesses, business owners that have large parking lots, those types of things. So that's something that'll become this kind of the first step along the way for our chloride education and outreach work that we're willing to be doing. So like I said, first step, ordinance, and then that will start building upon that, the importance of minimizing our chloride use in our community.
Any other questions for John? We'll open it up for public comment. Motion to close the public hearing.
I'm in motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Was that you or Dave?
Dave.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave, the political public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Intend a motion for ordinance.
I'm waiting to approve it.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Dave, to approve the ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Moving on, unfinished business, ordinance number 22-832, ordinance amending section 154.142 E and F of the Hutchinson City Code regarding sign permitting in Main Street area district and downtown design review. This is the second reading and adoption.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Forseer, council members. As you know, this evening, we're looking at the second reading of the signed ordinance amendments. Basically, just to recap what we're doing, previously, to do a mural, a conditional use permit was required for any mural, staff as well as some of the public, thought that was excessive for murals. So what we've done is noted that murals containing non-commercial spoons do not count for its total site signage and are exempt from the signed ordinance. And murals are required to be reviewed by the Public Arts Commission, which is also already in our codified ordinance. So we're just making it a little bit easier. I know Chamber, you've probably heard, is working on a grant, then working on a mural project, where hopefully they can hit a larger model murals up within the downtown area. So we're just trying to modify this to make it easier for folks to do some fun things within the community. Any questions on that? Okay, just, the other thing we're doing is taking out the downtown design review community requirements, and that was something that was put in place back in the early 2000s, and I don't think it ever really got off the ground. So we're just taking that language out because it's something that's not utilized. So that's the first one.
Any questions for?
No.
Intend a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 22-832.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave, to approve the ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Ordinance number 22-833, ordinance amending section 154.064 E2 and 154.067 E2 of the Hutchinson City Code regarding minimum lot size. This is the second reading and adoption.
Yes, city staff and the planning commission discussed this at length here the last couple of months, and if you notice, under E2A, for instance, a lot area was required to be one acre. However, previously, when you looked at the width and the depth, it ended up being quite a bit more over an acre. So what we've done is we've lowered the lot width requirements, probably most importantly. A lot of the costs for land is kind of based on the width, just because of the streets and facilities and such. So we've tried to make it a little bit easier for folks to develop property without having to have a lot of land that they knew don't need. We've done that both within our Iowa Light Industrial District and then within the C4 District. We've still noted that you need an acre, however, you don't necessarily have to go over an acre. You can, you don't go 150 by whatever equals an acre, or for instance, maybe a little bit wider, just more options versus having it spelled out so specifically. So this is going to help, I think, maybe facilitate a little bit more development for, so folks don't have to have as much land for their projects. Any questions? Thank you.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 22-833.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave, to approve the ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Ordinance number 22-834, ordinance to rezon property located at 490, Iowa 7 East to Iowa Light Industrial, and requested by Wildflower Properties LLC. Property owner with favorable planning commission recommendations. This is the second reading and adoption.
Yes, this request here is for the property that is where the food shelf is and cars on patrol, so that property will. So, that property will remain zoned, the C-four, however, that lot, that lot was large. So, the southern half of that lot, approximately, there's a legal description, is projected to be zoned I-1, that's what this is, so that a new warehouse building can be built there. Uh, the building will be very similar to the rest of the buildings within that area, a typical, you know, metal frame warehouse building. So, um, staff feels it's consistent with all the requirements for rezoning, consistent with our property's plan, consistent with the surrounding area, so we're recommending that this property be rezoned to facilitate that project. Any questions?
Motion to approve ordinance two-two dash eight-three-four.
Second. Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Another law to new business amendment to the resolution number one-five-four-zero-three for the two thousand twenty-two part-time seasonal temporary pay schedule.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So, this is pretty simple, um, looking to, I have some adjustments on this pay grid, um, really to accommodate our ice arena workers. Um, so adjusting, um, really leaving the arena attendant and then adding to level C title, uh, that's called seasonal ice arena worker. Uh, this is really due to the requirement of running the Zamboni and maintenance of that and, um, really the independence needed in that position, uh, because at times, some of those individuals are, are the only ones there, um, that are really responsible for that equipment and the arena. Uh, the second one is adjusting the title of the seasonal arena lead worker, uh, to match that seasonal lead ice arena worker, um, so it's matchup. And then adding, um, that abstract there, which is going to add that twenty-five cents per hour for additional responsibilities as the lead. Uh, so, pretty, pretty simple there. Um, biggest reason is making sure that the wage is competitive for that level of independence and the skill and ability, um, as well as, you know, attempting to retain, um, current returning incumbents for those positions. So, um, any questions?
And also, this is one of the few seasonal temporaries that record of eighteen years
Yes.
of age to, to, to.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve it?
I'll second that. Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the motion one-five-four-zero-three. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you so much.
We have economically developed authority ordinance from August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, the Luther Hutch Order League report, the Paul Grass Noxious Weed reports for August and September of two thousand twenty-two, October project summary. Chief Peterson, you having any thoughts tonight?
Not tonight.
I did have a resident ask about when you, the DNR, or if you guys are gonna harvest turkeys.
Guess I have something for tonight.
Thought you were gonna get out of here easy, huh?
Sure love.
Yeah, we're starting to receive, uh, some citizen complaints about the turkeys once again. I estimate the, the grouping, I guess, for lack of a better term, somewhere between twenty-two, twenty-four birds, um, of all ages and sex. So, um, I think what we'll end up doing is waiting till after the first of the year to apply for our new permit for two thousand twenty-three and then we'll try to do a weekend uh.
Are they, are they just hanging around like Pishney Lane yet?
No.
Or are they moving all over?
We have a flock down in South Franklin. I, I think that's where the majority of the birds in town now are, are on the head.
Corner, but nowhere this year.
Yeah. That whole neighborhood in there, um, they found a tree to roost in there, so that's where they're. Um, I did talk to a resident yesterday, um, and I think we've found a place where we can do the deeds, so to speak, but, uh, but again, that won't happen till after the first of the year.
It was bizarre going out in your house, getting dust and seeing these gigantic birds up in the old trees. It's just, it's strange.
So, and again, once again, I'll just remind everybody, part of, part of the problem, or if you see it as a problem, um, one neighbor loves them, one neighbor hates them, um, and unfortunately, they live next to each other.
So, for the students in attendance tonight, one fun fact is that when the police go out to get the turkeys, they can't drive the squad cars because the turkeys know the squad cars.
Well, this is a newer group, so maybe we can give another shot. Um, I think we have a method that works pretty good. Um, we just, again, have to establish someplace to do that and I think we've done that now. So, sometime after the first of the year, you can expect that we'll be all around attempting to gather them up.
I think one thing to keep in mind too, both for the council and for the public, is that we're regulated by the DNR when it comes to this as well. And there's a requirement for us to leave at least eight birds. So, I hate to say it, but you, you prefer to have a large amount when you go out because I think we're allowed to do it maybe once a year. And so, that's one thing, there's, there's a little bit of strategy involved with it as well.
So, we're limited that we have to leave eight, but there's no limit on how many you can take? Is that the rule?
No, uh, there's a limit on how many we can take.
Okay.
We have to estimate the size of the
Flock.
of the flock or whatever, turkeys gathering together at home. Um, and then, um, and then we request permits, the DNRs then grants us so many permits per year.
Sure.
Last, not last year, because we didn't do it last year. Two years ago, we received twenty permits, which we filled in one day.
Yeah. You think twenty-four this year?
Well, I think there's a total of somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-four birds. That's our best guess. So, we'll ask for twenty, obviously, we wouldn't be able to use them all this year unless next fall, we may be able to use them again, depending on the hatch over the spring and summer.
And you do take them to the local butcher and they?
Yes, yeah, uh, we
They utilize them in the alley?
Yeah, they process them and then we don't make the, the meat to the food shelf.
They don't, I mean, they're wrong there, they wrote a lot.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to be a problem, it's just kinda catches you off guard.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think the chief complaint is what they leave behind, not necessarily what they do while, maybe what they do while they're there too, but that's the, the chief complaint.
Anything else for Chief Peterson?
All right, thank you, have a good night.
John, Volson. Since we got two Johns, I gotta make sure I hear it right.
Right. Uh, just a reminder that the leaf, residential leaf vacuum program that's fired up today, uh, also, we will be by your place. The recommendation is you get the leaves out when you bring your garbage can up from the curb. Uh, just a reminder, um, we'll be by the day after your garbage is picked up and we begin roughly at seven o'clock in the morning and we typically run till, um, either we're done or, you know, four-thirty-ish. And, uh, there's a very good, uh, thing that the IT department put together for us, uh, on the city's website, kinda shows you what to do, how to do it, and what doesn't belong in there. Um, I don't think we're gonna have as much trouble because nobody's grass is growing real green right now, so I think we'll be, be good. So, that's just a reminder and I would ask people to check out, uh, the website, uh, because I think that's probably the best way to get the information.
So, John, uh, for people that didn't come off the farm, describe a wood, uh, what a trapper windmill is.
Sure, okay, the way, the way we do try to describe it is the row of leaves, the backside of it should touch the front of the curb, right? It should be as long as it can be and as short as it can be and as narrow as it can be.
So, what, are you talking like two feet wide?
No, uh, yeah, it could be, you know, it just depends on the number of leaves, of course.
As narrow as possible.
Well, the wind was blowing long before this program existed, so I'm not concerned about wind. And it'll probably blow long after it's over too, but, um, I think that the big thing is to get, keep it long and narrow, use the entire frontage that you have to distribute the amount of leaves. Um, don't put piles. Piles don't work, so, because we physically do not get hold of the machine to pick the leaves up. So, very good, that's all I had.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Volson, do you have any thoughts?
Two Johns will make a right. Um, I'd like to draw the attention to South Grade Road Bridge. Um, if you've been by there lately, where most of those fishermen fish, um, they're looking really nice. A local fisherman and with help of a few others have done a bunch of removals, brushed and cleaned up down there, so I'll extend my thanks and gratitude to those guys for that and, um, uh, I'll leave you on, I'm looking forward to some turkey for our Christmas party.
Since we have students in attendance, do you guys have any questions for the council?
Going to have any questions for the council?
Yes, sir. Want to come up to the? Name and grade, please.
Zachary Roche, grade eleven. I'm curious, what is your plan to do about the pollution in the Crow River?
That's funny.
I'm also right here that can talk about that.
Johnny, want to address our Lake River basin study that we're doing?
No.
Uh, great question, um, thank you for even considering and being concerned about it. The city does lots of things, from how we operate on a day-to-day basis, how we keep our streets clean, how we manage our trees, we were just talking about the LEAF Act program, those are just a couple examples. What we can do locally within our own community to minimize pollutants getting into the waterways, um, not just helps us locally, it also helps those downstream. But then, that same rule applies upstream to us as well. What happens upstream of our community also impacts the lake locally. So, sediment accumulating within our lake, some of that comes from us, from our storm sewer systems, um, but the majority of the water that goes through the lake in our community comes from outside of our community. So, one of the things we're actually working on currently is looking to identify projects to improve water quality upstream of the lake in town here, um, to try to minimize and limit the amount of sediment that's getting into the river, thus getting into the lake. And it all comes down to just trying to live better as stewards of the environment, not just from what you do in your home, don't blow your grass clippings into the street. And that runs down into the gutter line, it ends up into a catch base and goes into a pipe. Sometimes it goes to a pond, sometimes it doesn't. When it doesn't, it goes right to the river. That grass breaks down over time and that's where you see algal blooms because of the phosphorus in it, those types of things. So, anything we do, um, on a real small scale, um, can certainly have an impact when you look at it as an aggregate. When you have lots of people doing little things, that adds up to a huge impact. So, um, pay attention to education materials that come up within utility buildings, we do education outreach, we do implementation and maintenance within our own systems and we even go beyond that and looking outside of our community to try to identify things that we can do to minimize, reduce sediment nutrients and those things getting into our waterways.
Um, a couple of years ago, the city received just over three million dollars from the state of Minnesota to help improve those waterways. And so, we're in the process right now of identifying several projects that will go to directly improve and impact the waterways in Hutchinson.
Another example, another example is something you witnessed tonight, uh, chloride ordinance. That is another example of something we do at the local government level to help minimize pollutants, not just, um, the, the common ones, solids, dirt, nutrients in the form of organics, um, chlorides is another, uh, pet waste. Lots of people have pets in their community, where do they think that bacteria goes when it rains, they don't pick up after their pets. That ultimately is either getting taken up by the soil or it's ending up in the river through pipes, networks, those types of things. So, anything you leave on the, anything you leave in nature that's not from nature can have a negative impact. So, minimize your trace as a human and certainly over time, those things will help to correct themselves, so.
So, John, the other thing that the city's kind of been doing is marking catch bases that says, let's go through the Crow River, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
That's part of what the city does too, is they mark that to remind people that it does end up in the river.
Yep, yep, those go right to our waterways, they don't go to the treatment plant. So, yeah, there's lots of things we're doing and, um, certainly we have a lot of work left ahead of us, it's not something that's gonna end, there's not an end date on water quality and improving and minimizing our impacts on the environment, so.
Thanks for the question. Thanks, John. Mark, do you have any things?
Yes, I want to get back to the animal thing. So, uh, earlier this month, Hutchinson Police Services declared an animal in the city of Hutchinson to be dangerous and under our ordinance, that, uh, animal has the right to have a hearing to contest that dangerous animal designation and that hearing has to take place in front of you as the city council. So, I'd be looking for you guys to set a hearing date for this person to come and explain their side of the story. Uh, right now, we're looking at two possible dates, anytime on Thursday, the twentieth, or if we're the council meeting on the twenty-fifth. The twentieth would be the preferred date, um, but we would need at least three of you there.
How long, how long do you think it's gonna take?
I'm estimating an hour.
Hour?
I will be out of town on the twentieth, so I'll be up to New York.
If it could be later in the afternoon, I can maybe
Yes, morning or afternoon.
Thursday's not till afternoon for me.
It can be later on, on four.
Is it?
Four o'clock on the?
Twenty?
Twenty?
Chad, you can't be here.
Or no, yeah.
I'm not gonna be here.
Chad's gonna be on that date.
Are you, you, Dave?
Is it twenty?
Could be.
And or, or if it's gonna be more of a sure thing for you, I'll be here on the twenty-fifth.
I would be here the twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth and forty.
You'd be here. Yeah.
I think
Twenty, I'd be here.
That's probably
Twenty, like four, thirty. We need an hour or?
I guess I prefer four, wants to be on the same side.
Four o'clock?
I'd make a motion if you would have four on the twenty-fifth.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to set the date for the twenty-fifth at four o'clock. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Dave? Dave?
I'm sorry, I don't have anything, uh, Mary, Harry.
Mary? Pat?
Uh, just to kind of tell them what the others commented in chat, the, I took, we took our grandson to the fireman's park and, ooh, these two, and it was hard to get him to leave, I mean, it's just, it's, it's really a great park.
Any more?
Chad?
Everything else, true.
Mary, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Surprise.
Yeah.
Maybe more of a heads up for the public, there is a candidate forms tomorrow night at six o'clock here in the council chambers. I believe the council candidates start, start off at six and then I think it's the school board candidates at six forty-five and then, uh, county attorney candidates at seven forty-five. So, just wanted to put a plug in for that, I think it's a good opportunity for everyone to at least get to know the, the candidates. And we had a request from Mary about doing a tour of, of the PD, um, and so I sent email out if you're interested in doing that. We'll obviously do something once it's, it's up and operational and we feel the desire to take a look at it prior to then, just let me know. And then, um, regarding the, the, the public comment tonight, uh, at the open session, I did want the council to know that staff is already looking at updating that, that, um, that fee, um, for next year. One of the things to keep in mind is that there is a fifty cent charge that goes on the utility bills that help pay for those costs. Um, it is somewhat unique for Hutchinson, there's a lot of cities that don't cover any of those costs. But it is something that we will offer and I would say probably from the last year or two is where we started to see those.
is where we started to see those costs creep up over. You know, in general, the $4,000 usually has covered it. It's never been the intent to cover all of those costs. But that is something that, you know, due to, you know, the comment that was submitted, it's something that is being looked at and considered. I've always, that's all I have.
Yeah, I have nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad, with hearing, home favor.
Aye.
Opposed, carry.